Kevin G., we call him now.
So how, a friend or is he?
Yeah, well, we have differing views. The thing I respect about Kevin is, is that same thing I talked about earlier, you know, he's pretty, I mean, he feels pretty strongly about some things. He sends me a lot of information, but he's never, ever gotten nasty, you know? Now, he thinks sometimes I'm a little stupid that I haven't followed, but he never calls me names either. And even on emails, and we've done more emails, but, and at these town halls where he could be vocal, he asks me, he's asked some tough questions, but he's never gotten carried away. And I've told him that before, I respect him for that, even though we may have different political views on something, so.
Well, I sent you an email, all three of the commissioners plus Danny. So, I got a couple of responses back, so.
How long?
Immediately, it was within hours, so I was really pleased. Well, I live here in Jacksonville, and the Woodlands Association has a MOU with the county on the five acres that's remaining of their 10 acres up here, parts. So we work with the county on, I don't know if you knew that, our trailhead is on county land. It's up the upper parking lot of Britt.
Okay.
And the county has just been really nice about allowing us to use it and so forth. We haven't gotten them out to very many meetings because they only have five acres, and Britt Park is part of that, so we only use about an acre and a half, two acres of it. But anyway, that's a very, very important part of our trail system here, is to have the county involved. So we have the county, BLM, City of Jacksonville, and the Woodlands Association runs the whole thing. So we're very interested in the history and so on. And I'm glad that the four properties finally flowed to the city, because I think they're doing it, they've got some interest in it. But we've got the feeling that the county just isn't that interested in Jacksonville. Take a look at the US Hotel, and that's what I came about.
Okay, I think, I think I responded, I remember the, I think, I think I was one of the responses.
Yeah, I got several emails back, let's see, this one came from Theresa Spradling.
She's our assistant, she's our contract manager.
Okay, and she was the one that, I have to print off, there were several others, but, and then I got one from Rob over at the Historical Society. Because the US Hotel is a disgrace right now. Things are falling off of it. If you look at the balcony, there's a, there's some stuff on the end, it's supposed to support the water that comes off it, but it's actually hanging down about 18 inches on one end, and it's gonna fall on somebody. And for the last 40 years, the, where the water comes out on the Beakman Bank side, that wa, that pipe has leaked, and it's washing out the brick all the way down, almost 30 feet of just the wash coming down there. And so I started investigating, and I found out that the Historical Soci, or the, the city, or the McSeddon County gets $1,900 a month rent off of the US Hotel.
From US, from US Bank.
I mean, US Bank, part of the US Hotel. So that's 20, over, almost $23,000 a year that they get off of that. And then the Historical Society renting out the upstairs and the trolley stop antiques, they get $22,000 rent, but then they have, out of that, they pay for utilities and all the other stuff. So Rob says they have a net of a little over $11,000. And I asked, where does that money go? And he says, well, it goes into the operation of the Historical Society. So I asked the county, where does that $22,800 go? And he said, well, you've been receiving it for close to 40 years, what happens to it? And she answered back and said it goes into building maintenance.
Building maintenance, huh?
But where? They're not putting a cent into this building, at least from what I can see, can you?
Sure, I'd be glad to answer that. First of all, to your first point, that you think the county is, you know, abandoned or has no interest in Jacksonville. Let's address that issue first, okay? I mean, obviously, the history of Jackson County government starts right here.
Well, I know.
The courthouse. So, yes, absolutely. One of the reasons, well, let's just, let me, did, did Rob, do you understand the symbiotic relationship between Southern Oregon Historical Society and Jacksonville County?
Yeah, he explains it in here, that they rent from you for a dollar a year.
Yeah.
And they get to collect whatever rent they collect, and it goes into their operational, basically into the organization.
So, what I mean, though, even, even if I may, excuse me for interrupting, but I'm just trying to a little.
But you have, they have a long lease or something.
So, the other buildings that we deeded over to the city of Jacksonville, that was all part of that, this goes way back to the 50s, and when the Southern Oregon Historical Society started. And what the deal was then is that the county had an arrangement with SOHS for those buildings. We rented them for nothing, a dollar. One of the caveats on the lease was, is they were responsible to maintain the buildings, because they were an asset to the citizens of Jackson County. That meant all of them, that meant all of the five structures. US Hotel was unique in that, and that, and I'm not exactly sure, I don't understand the exact details, but US Hotel was a little bit unique from the Beakman Bank, the house up on the hill, the old rectory, the Catholic rectory, and...
The Beakman House and the Beakman Bank.
Yeah, pardon me, yes. And so, anyway, so, as, as the Historical Society's fundings kinda started to dry up a little bit.
Kind of.
Okay, okay, well, I'm being kind. They, they could not maintain, and in the lease, in that, the lease is that, it states very clearly is that the maintenance of those buildings, or the responsibility of Southern Oregon Historical Society. And through these last several years, that just wasn't being done. So the county started doing some of that.
So the county has worked on the building?
On the, all the buildings to a certain amount, and then we turned around and banked that. Southern Oregon SOHS couldn't afford to pay us, so we just banked that. So, over the years, this ended up being about $400,000.
Of the five, working on the five buildings?
Yes.
You spent that much?
Yeah, $400,000.
Really?
So, we weren't gonna get that. So then we signed another lease with Southern Oregon Historical Society. We said to them, why don't we sell the US Hotel? That's the most marketable piece of property out of the five buildings. Okay, so why don't we sell that? Oh, okay, they were thinking, we could use the money as well. We told them they could sell it for anything they wanted. All we wanted was our $400,000 back. So, you could sell it, and I think they, they originally put it on the market for like a million five or something like that. They expected maybe net out a million dollars after they paid the county a million plus. They borrowed some money from Alan DeBoer, and the process through this, for the Southern Oregon Society, he underwrote how much was, what they'd done. So, so that, that's the agreement, that's the agreement that stands today. We've talked to them about the maintenance on the, on the US Hotel, we're aware of that, that's something they're supposed to take care of. So, we have been in conversation with them about, nobody's jumping up, of course, we've been through the Great Recession, but nobody's jumping up and saying, yeah, I wanna buy this building. So, we have suggested that they might want to lower the asking price on the building. They're hoping still to get the million dollars, so they're saying, well, okay, but then will you take your lesser amount? No, we want the money back. When I say we, I'm using that, obviously, as, as, as speaking for the county. We want that, we wanna pay back our taxpayers for that amount of money. So if you sell it for $500,000, that's fine, we'll take the 400, you get $100,000. So that's, there, how are you, sir?
Very well.
So, that's, that's where that stands right now.
But you get over $22,000 a year off the rent of the bank?
Of the US Bank, yeah.
Why couldn't that go towards some of that? I, that just seems to be kinda lost in...
No, well, that was part of the original agreement, that's, that's the reason, that was set aside. That's money, that's, that's income that comes into the county, like I say, goes into the building maintenance fund. We maintain numerous number of buildings throughout the county.
But none of it is really marketed toward the...
None of it, none of it's line item for the Jacksonville Hotel. It just, it goes into that pot, that building, that building maintenance pot. And all the buildings, whether it be, whether it be central expenses, or all goes into that pot. I mean, every, every department pays into that pot. If they're, if they're in the, in a group of buildings, county buildings, part of their fund money goes to pay into that, so everybody pays into that big pot. So that's where we're at with the, with the US Hotel.
The so-called historic tax that was voted on back, what, 1947, '48, that still brings in a stream of money. That's, I know it's been folded in, but that tax base or rate is still bringing money into the county.
Yeah, Measure 50 really was the, I mean, the voters voted that in, but it just meant, it just said that that, that all folds in into that $2.01 that we can charge as, for the county. When you get your bill from the county, your property tax bill, and you look at this and you're paying, I don't know what you're paying, none of my business, but out of that, only $2.01 goes to Jackson County itself. Part of that was, of that also, so there was some library money as well that went into that. That was Measure 50, said you could roll it all in, and then what the intent of the legislation was then, is to set, it was in response to the ever-increasing property tax bill that was growing on, it was kinda a little bit of a shadow of Measure, or what do they call them in California, Proposition 13, about putting some sort of cap on, on property taxes because they were going crazy. That was, that was Measure, that Measure 50, that, or actually Measure 5, way back when, but 50's kinda the grandchild of Measure 5. So, what they said is, is counties, the state legislature did this, take any money that you have coming in, whether it be timber, makes no difference, which includes all special districts, okay? Take all that money, and then, no. So here's your pot of revenue. Now, what is your pot of expenses? And we wouldn't, we, we gave them the expenses, we didn't have any, I guess it was down up and, up north. So they said, okay, then, $2.01 in Jackson County ought to be about the right number. Josephine County at 58 cents, same formulas, it's, everything was the same, but they were receiving quite a bit more money from federal timber back when ONC was working, okay? And they had a lot less expenses. Same way with Curry County. Now you get up to Portland, that's almost $6 per thousand. There's no timber money or such. So, so that's, so I'm just trying to explain to you where that money, people say, well, gee, you stole that money from the, from the SOHS, or the libraries, or et cetera. We didn't do anything. We just did what the legislature gave us, told us to do.
But if the historic fund hadn't been there, would the $2.01 be down lower?
It would've been less revenue coming out there, so who knows, it might've been more. I, I don't know, that was way before my time. I just know how the formula worked. Because people wonder, well, how come, how come counties have such different property rates? And I'm talking just about the county now, I'm not talking about all the other, everything else that we pay on our, on our, on our November tax bill. I'm just talking about what the county gets. And that was a formula, and it's very... I think I might have a chart of that. Now, this, this has to do with, with federal acres, so, no, that was, that's another chart. So, anyway, that's, that's where that comes from.
So, the county's kind of locked out of doing any maintenance work on the building because Historical Society's responsibility is to take care of the building?
We could, and we have a little bit in the past, because after all, that's still a county asset.
I know.
Okay, so we have done some of that in the past. In fact, there at the Beakman Bank, there, about five years ago, there was something major, I don't know if the roof or something like that, the county went in and did that. So we, we don't wanna see that completely disintegrate, so we have zero value in the asset. But it's really, really our only leverage, if you will, with SOHS to get off the diet and, and let's get this building sold. They don't, they, they can't afford it, and we can't, we, we don't want it. But we're not gonna give up that revenue, because we got it, it's part of our revenue stream, you know, like I say, so, you understand, so I'm talking as a business personnel.
Yeah, I, I just can't quite understand why that rent you're getting from the US Bank couldn't go, I know it gets put out through your 500 buildings, but that money's being generated here in Jacksonville, and that hotel is suffering really bad, to a point where there's some safety issues. People can't even walk out on that historic, well, it's not...
I don't think they go out on the balcony anymore.
No, they can't go out on the balcony anymore, and there's things gonna be dropping off of it, if you look at it, it's unsafe, and...
I just wanted to address your point of why you're like, why money's being generated in Jacksonville, why does this happen in Jacksonville?
I understand the reason behind it.
Okay, so I'm gonna say, what about the stuff that we're maintaining in White City? So will you take that money and put it in Jacksonville?
I know, but it's one of the most historic buildings in the whole valley, and it's suffering really bad.
Well, that's what I felt about the courthouse.
Yeah, courthouse was kept up pretty, pretty good shape. They, Historical Society got some good grants over the years, and kept it up, it was the rest of the building.
Well, and then the Ashlands went in and did quite a bit of work here just recently, so.
At the courthouse?
Mm-hmm.
Talk about an asset to this, this valley, there really something.
The Ashlands, Mel Ashland, yeah, absolutely.
I had all three of their kids in my fifth grade class, so I know Matt, Eric, you know them very well.
Yeah, they, they, so, that may not be a satisfactory answer to your question, but that's the answer.
But you could do more if it becomes a super safety issue or something.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it gets, you're, you're exactly right, Eric.
You can always condemn the bill.
Pardon me?
You can always condemn the bill.
Yeah, we could, we don't wanna do, and we don't wanna do that, you're right.
That'd be unfortunate.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna do that either.
Is the title clear on it?
Title's clear, yes.
Because, I remember when I first moved here, there was a controversy over who actually owned it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's been cleared up.
Has it?
That, we had to go through that whole thing with the other four buildings, what we gave to the city of Jacksonville.
Yeah, because there were some, like Robbie Collins, when he gave the rectory, there was a stipulation on the, in the deed that it could never be sold.
Well, yes, now, there are some of those things, you're exactly right, that stipulated what, what those buildings could be used for. Now, the Ashland Hotel, or Ashland Hotel, the US Hotel, the, the house out of the Beakman Place, what's the other house out there? What's the other part of your family?
Well, the rectory and the Beakman House and the Beakman Bank.
I thought there's one, anyway, there is no, there's no inconferences on those as far as what they can or cannot be used for, same way with the US Hotel.
Now, the Beakman Bank, it was really, that was really cloudy as to who actually ended up with that, because the artifacts are supposed to go one place, the university, the Historical Society, Oregon Historical Society was involved in it, so the county ended up to clear title on the thing. But they're still not sure about the artifacts.
Yeah, yeah. I'm really all, we care about the building, but it's not ours, we don't, we have nothing. And I just wanna address that too for a second, that when we started negotiating with the city of Jacksonville on that, we've been accused of, well, gee, it was a county, it's a sweet deal for the county, because we got out of it, so, because it was a maintenance, those buildings were gonna be a maintenance nightmare, et cetera, et cetera. We could have, is it, because titles were clear, we could've sold those, including...
The courthouse.
The courthouse.
But Jack Walker stepped in it, when he said on several occasions, let's just sell the buildings, who needs history, who needs that musty, old stuff?
That was, that was, that was years before.
I know, but still.
That was years before, that was years before.
That set the tone, you know, when you said that musty stuff.
Well, it just didn't set the tone, the current board of commissioners, okay.
Yeah, I know, it was there, and people remember from meetings, kind of.
My, my point, well, yeah, unfortunately, we remember some of the negative things and forget the positive things. I'm just saying that we, that is, that is a legal reality. The county very well could have, those are assets to the, to the taxpayers of Jackson County, we could've sold those. Now, who would've bought them, I'm not sure, but we could have. Instead, we said, here, city of Jacksonville, here you, here you are. Yes, did that relieve us of maintenance? Absolutely, I don't duck that issue. But it also gave some, some valuable, the city of Jacksonville can do that. There's no...
No restrictions were put on it?
No, they can, they could do whatever they want to with, with those buildings.
Well, see, all of our properties, our 21 properties that we have around Jacksonville, for the Woodlands Association, has three ownerships, almost all the properties have a deed restriction, they cannot ever be sold.
Yeah, well...
We, we got that on there immediately, so we deserve it. So, yeah, people could change their minds, and... But what do you find the most challenging thing with your job? 22 of these town meetings and people coming in front of you every week, what do you find the most challenging part?
I think, I, I wasn't so naive coming into this job, since I've been involved in the area for a long period of time. However, I was naive to the fact that the difficulty to get things done, in many cases, because, because of the administrative, I'm gonna talk about local, I'm gonna talk about the administrative quagmire that's involved in working through government, and that's all the way from the top to the bottom. And so you just don't decide, you know, we oughta do this, this is the right thing to do, whatever that thing is, okay? You just don't go out and do it. So you come up with an idea, you could, I mean, even get it, to discuss it, to get, to act on it with public meeting law, and I'm not against public meeting laws at all, and I understand the whole intent and the reason for that, and adhered strictly to that. But it's just, that's probably been the thing that, that I dislike most about my experience. Other than, it's been a great experience. I wish I was a little younger, I would've tried to for a second term, but I promised my wife I would help me 73 when I'm out, and after 48 years, it'll be 49 years then, we wanna do some things with ourselves, for ourselves, because who knows, there are no guarantees. So, it's been, it's been a great, even, even, even when I get shots from across the valley, I, I, I don't react, that's, that's public right, as long as you don't get personal. That's why I said that when I began with, that's the thing that, that I draw the line there, but other than that...
Do you find, might somebody else ask you a question? Mr. Fisher, wasn't that long ago you had a $34 billion budget hold close? Somehow you managed to do it, it seems like things are maybe improving a little bit, you should talk just a little better about our budget going into fiscal year 2015, and we're, something I'm concerned about is...
Well, we never had, we never, we never had a $34 million deficit. We had, we had anywhere between a $6 to a $10 million deficit.
You had a $34 million shortfall in projected revenues about three years ago.
Not since I've been aboard. We've never had that big, we've never had that big a deficit.
Not a deficit, a drop, you may have...
Oh, yes, your revenue's dropped, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
You had a $34 million shortfall in revenue.
I misunderstood your question.
Not a deficit.
Okay, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So you had $34 million less come in than you expected, didn't you, but I think...
Yes, well, from, from, from where it was in its peak in 2006, or actually even before that, when ONC was, was really kicking in the big ducks, $19, $19 million a year at one time, we used to receive from ONC, you know, we received $7 million at the max, and a good portion of that's tied up in Title II or Title III money. So we really received this last authorization, reauthorization, one-year reauthorization, about 3.5 million, but nevertheless, so that, that was that?
You had to reshuffle the cards.
We had to reshuffle the cards, that's exactly right. We had our investment income dropped. We're still outperforming, proud, proud to report that Jackson County has the best return on its investment of any county, and the state of Oregon just reported, just came out, Secretary of State, which isn't much, it's only 1.7. But public monies, you can, there's, there's strict rules on what you can do with that as far as investments. The average is about 1%, so, anyway. So, anyway, that dropped considerably, property taxes went flat or less, fees to the development, you would be aware of this, dropped precipitously, fees to the county clerk, because people weren't filing, stuff for deeds and so on and so forth, that dropped precipitously. So all these little income streams, or just, the big one being the, from the federal government and then, I, I, just to be honest, most governments, local governments operate, you know, as a, as a funnel for the money that comes from Washington or Salem. Anyway, that was, that was, that was a difference that goes from, or were, was, in 2006, even autotypical, because the, the last time the county received $19 million from ONC was in the late 70s, or very early 80s, I think it was in the 70s. In fact, I know it was, because I talked to a county commissioner a year ago, who was commissioner at that time, and, and he was, he was joking with me, he says, boy, I couldn't be a commissioner now, he says, back in the 70s, he says, we had, it was embarrassing how much money. In fact, at one time, the county didn't collect any property taxes. There was two years where they didn't collect any property taxes, because they had so much money flowing in. Those days are long gone. So my point being is, so, okay, so what happened all of a sudden? We went from a shrinkage, and that got down to our budget two years ago, that we were at the point of, in keeping libraries open, in keeping, and I'm talking about discretionary dollars out of our general fund, we were gonna be spending a deficit of right about $6 million, a little over $6 million, $6.8 million. Now, by a deficit, I don't mean we were borrowing or anything for that, we were taking out of reserves on an annual basis, about, close, was this called, $7 million? That was in 2011. 2011, 2012. 2012, 2012, 2013, 2013, 2014, we started seeing a pickup. We got the reauthorization on secure rural schools, which is supposed to take place of the, of the ONC, plus our pill money, which is payment in lieu of taxes, federal program that's nationwide, that increased, and we started seeing an uptick in those other revenue streams. So we were able, this year, for example, is that from our, when we did the budget, and when we dropped, adopted the budget in June of this year, or 14, 15, is that we saw an increase, unexpected increase in our income of almost $10 million. That's pretty good. So what we're doing there, so instead of you spending $7 million in deficit, okay, we're gonna be into the plus a couple million dollars, and that'll go right back into the reserve fund. A lot of that is because of some very innovative things that the county has done, and I'll be real honest, it's because of some very innovative thinking of our county administrator. The county doesn't do anything for free. I just hate being all the, we're running like a business, and wherever there's an opportunity, can't raise taxes, I'm not talking about that. In fact, all the things that have gone on, and I wanna just brag, and I'm not for anything for me, but consider, and again, this, I think would be very important to you, through the last six years, the county has spent a lot of money on building projects within Jackson County, starting with the 9/11 center, you know, which is not part of the county, it's a 9/11 emergency services, it's county-wide service, but we built the building, we built the new sheriff's office, whether you think that or remodel out there.
Where'd that money come from?
That's, that came out of our, our, our reserve fund.
It did?
Yes, yeah. Whether, whatever you think of HHS, the New Health and Services Building.
How did that thing get so ugly? It is, it is.
I agree with you 100%, I had nothing to do with it, but I'm not saying that, anyway, it's on my watch, so, anyway, it is ugly. I can, I said, we oughta just plant, buy specimens of quail trees and get them in the ground as soon as we can.
Like Mrs. Ashland once said, if a building's ugly, just put a big tree in front of it.
Well, that's, exactly. I did, I'm, I'm getting off on track here for a second, I'll come back, I'll get on track, but I was kinda hoping, if you remember when Transamerica built the pyramid in San Francisco, their headquarters building, oh, the odd cries, within the city was, it was unbelievable. What an ugly, this is not, this is not San Francisco, where the bay window, where the, this city on, all this blah, 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 blah. Now, 30-some years later, it's an icon. When they show, when they show pictures of San Francisco, they show here the Golden Gate or the Transamerica Building, because immediately...
Yeah, it showed up on, several years ago, it showed up on the front page of our, I mean, the front cover of our fifth grade math book, sticking up out of the clouds.
Is that right? So, here's what, the connection there is, is that my hope is...
Oh, I see.
Is 20, 20 years from now, that building, because it's so ugly, I hope it's gone. Twenty years from now, that building, because it's so ugly, I hope it's gone. Anyway, so, so one thing that I think, that, well, I think, I know, that we're very pleased with, is that we have done all of these building projects without, we could have gone for fees. Government has, and then the state of Oregon, I told you, we can't raise our fees. It takes the vote, if Jackson County wanted to raise its property taxes, besides the three percent that's, that's mandated, we couldn't do it unless the other thirty-five counties in Oregon said we could. That's in the constitution. That's what Measure fifty did, is it set the fees, and the only way those fees can ever be changed is by the vote of Oregon, not, not just Jackson County. So we got two dollars and one cent, which really, quite honestly, just about pays for our public safety. We get about thirty-three million dollars on property taxes on an annual basis. Our, our public safety, that includes the sheriff, includes the district attorney, that includes juvenile corrections, and a transitional center and, and community justice, to the tune of about twenty-eight million, a little over twenty-eight million dollars. So that eats up most of that. But anyway, but we could, and you see it happen in City of Bedford, I'm not throwing them under the bus, as a bus, when I'm using them as an example, is that we could just apply fees. We call them utility, if Jacksonville does
I would say
So, and again, I won't throw them, but we, we, in this board of commissioners and the previous board of commissioners as well, so that's, that's, I actually floated that idea, let me be real upfront, I floated that idea
I remember when you hit the fan.
I was trying to save the libraries, guys, just trying to figure, I didn't figure there was any way that that would ever get passed. You know, the voters have never passed that. And so I thought, well, if they really want, we do that. Well, anyway, that went nowhere. So, and because of the, and the objections of one commissioner in particular, Commissioner Rasher was adamantly opposed to doing that. And he convinced me, anyway, so we didn't do that. Point being is, is the citizens of Jackson County from county taxes haven't paid one penny more for all the improvements that's gone on, so I think that's pretty cool.
Now, across from the voting center and the probation center, there was a church there. First assembly got, the county bought that. What was the plan? Where'd that money come from and what was
It came from the reserve. It came from the reserve. And let me explain to you something real quick, if you don't mind. The, our budget is developed by our budget committee, which is made up of the three budget, or the three county commissioners and three laypeople. Now, those laypeople are appointed by the board of commissioners, so people say, well, it's all gonna work. I gotta tell you, Kevin's been there, that's on a good old boy thing. It's a pretty robust conversation with the laypeople. So anyway, they're the ones so determined on, on our general budget. The board of commissioners have, have a small amount of leeway to spend some money as long as we don't exceed the general budget. But anyway, so the idea for that, the reason for doing that is, we thought at some time, if we ever wanted to expand that building, the old Safeway building there, and we would need more parking.
Oh, so it was parking, it was mostly driving that?
Yeah, so that was, that was, that was the purpose for that. That property's come up again under, one of the things we'd like to see done, will come on my watch, was we really desperately need for a district attorney's office. That's an old insurance building over there on Sixth Street.
The one that got bombed?
On Tenth Street, I think. Yeah, the one that got bombed, yeah.
Not much security there, is there?
Yeah, well, there's no security, but there is no, I mean, it's, if you ever been into it, it's just a, a bunch of cubicles in there, and attorneys and DAs. Anyway, so we thought, well, maybe, maybe this, that might be a good place to do that. The problem is, is the courthouse is over here, and I'm talking about the Justice Building where our courts are, and the, and having the DA's office over, over there. So if you know where our DA, DA's office is now, on Tenth Street, there's a parking lot that the county had to build. City code said, if you're gonna build, or if you're gonna remodel, they, those, that insurance building, and make a DA's office, who will go through our permits, and get it for me, then you have to have X amount of parking spaces.
So that's where the parking is for that building?
Nobody ever parks there. You never see anybody park there. It was a requirement, a building requirement, City of Bedford, we have to follow the rules like anybody else. So that's probably what we'd like to do, is we'd like to build a new DA's office there, tear down the old inch, and make that a parking spot. Don't, split it, but make a building that truly makes sense for, for the district attorney. The other thing, while we're talking about buildings, is the other thing that will probably happen much sooner, and that's a justice court. Right now, we lease a building from Dennis Richardson in Central Point. State law says that a county, the, a district, or a, a justice court cannot be located in the same city as the county seat. I don't know why that is, but that's what it says. So what it means is, we can't have justice court in Bedford. And that's the reason why it's in Central Point right now. Dennis is, you know, retires running for governor. He's kind of interested in getting rid of his buildings and such. So we've looked around, bought a piece of property in Central Point over off of Biddle Road, Biddle and Hammrick Road over there, and we're looking at proposals for, to build a small justice court over there. So that's our billing project.
And that's coming again out of that reserve fund?
Comes out, yeah, exactly right. And on the reserve fund too, let me explain something. And this is, governmental budgeting is so unlike the private sector. That's what I've been talking about frustrations. I always considered myself a really good budget person. In fact, I like it, it's one of the few people that, I mean, anyway, I really enjoy
You're rare.
But government budgeting, budgeting is so much different. I mean, the rules and such is just incredible. But I'm saying that only because, let's go to the Health and Human Services building, or we could go to the sheriff's office, either way, doesn't make any difference to any of the places, but Health and Human Services would be a good, good example. That building is going to cost us, with the parking structure, somewhere around thirty-five million dollars.
Because the price has doubled since you started it, hasn't it?
Well, no, not necess, well, it's gone up a little bit because we've added square footage, per square foot, it's still in the budget. And we had, and we put on two more stories on the parking structure. So anyway
You tore down an existing building?
We tore down the old federal building. That was the old idea originally, was to remodel that building and leave it there. Once, it was a CMNG, a construction management general contractor, request for proposals. And the, the general contractor and the architect, after looking at it, said, you know what? We can build you a better building for less money by tearing, and tear down this old building, because this building, retrofit, wasn't even close to seismic four conditions, which is the location we're in, the area we live in. We said, okay, let's take a look at that. So that's why that, so that's the reason why the building came down, this building, whether you like it or not. I will tell you, the inside is really well laid out. The outside is ugly, I absolutely agree with that. But nevertheless, how that building's being paid for, again, this is government. When, when we have dedicated dollars coming to Health and Human Services for either public health, mental health, whatever those, those services, that Health and Human Services provides, most of that money's all federal money, some of it comes from the state.
But that's more for operation, isn't it?
It can be, it is for, it's for specific programs, dedicated dollars, it says, let's just say, here's a million dollars, for that million dollars, you're expected to do this.
We have to have a building to do that.
Well, yeah, but let me get to this with where I'm trying to go with this. This is what you gotta do, here's a million dollars, we expect this. We expect outcomes, okay? So if you're efficient, so we say, okay, we take the million dollar grant. Again, there are measurable outcomes that you have to meet, and if we can do it at less money, the money we save out of that million dollars, we don't send it back to the federal government. We can put it in the, I find this one blank, into the, their fund, their Health and Human Services, Health and Human Services fund balance.
Do they hold on to it?
That department holds on to it. I mean, that's what it's, it can't be spent for anything else, but it's money, it's kind of like extra money, discretionary money in a way, but it's gotta stay, it's gotta be spent in that Health and Human Services. So, and they have done that over the last several years, so they've got, they've built a huge
Reserve fund?
My mind's going goofy. Fund, anyway. So what they're doing, so they're paying for the lion's share of that building out of theirs, because we can do that. And here's a case where you're taking dedicated dollars, and we're going to turn them into general fund dollars. And how we're doing that is, again, this is innovative. We're going to build the building with our dedicated dollars. Then we're going to turn around and lease the building back to the state.
It's gonna be owned by the county?
It's gonna be owned by the county. The county, the county employees in it will be doing exactly what we're doing right now. I think the state will pay us for that. So it's kind of a perpetual, the money, but that money will not have to go into their fund balance. That becomes general fund dollars. It's, it's a very convoluted and, and confusing process, but it works. So, and that's why I said earlier, we've done several things like that in the county, where we take dedicated dollars, we do what we're supposed to do with that, we generate some general fund dollars that goes into the general fund. So that's one reason why we have the second largest fund balance in the state of Oregon, so feel really good about that.
Are the old buildings up on East Main?
On East Main, we'll either sell those or lease them. We would like to, because we don't need the money immediately, of course, it's gonna take a while to sell those, but nevertheless, I'd rather lease, this is, this makes, for me, business sense, I'd rather have long-term revenue than short-term revenue if you don't need it. So that's what, that's, that's the plan, is to try to lease those buildings out. The only problem I have with that, and I'll be real honest with that, is I hate competing against private sector. And that's what you're doing when you're doing that. So we've had some discussions about that, but anyway, that's, that's what those buildings are. That probably took us way off track.
No, this is very interesting.
But that's kind of the ways we
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what I was interested is hearing you talk about, you know, I knew when we moved through, you know, twelve and into thirteen, and now we're pretty much most of the way through fourteen, and that you've already budgeted fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen.
So what I, what I think I see is, I think I see these budgeting techniques that you've been using the last couple of years actually start to get you a little bit altitude and airspeed.
You're exactly right. That's, that's exactly right. And, and you have to be careful, you can't do, when you, when you do the budget, well, take you back to my prime, I used to do budgets for, for LTM.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Sure.
I was at a meeting, a town hall meeting that you had here a couple of years ago, and at the time, our county budget was, if I remember, I think your county budget was about three hundred and fifty million. And, and it's, it's less than that.
Three oh six, three oh eight.
That's a big difference.
Difference, yeah. And a lot of that is dedicated funds. Out of that three hundred plus, whether it's three hundred and eight or three hundred and fifty, I don't think it was ever quite three fifty, but it was, it was close to that, okay? You recognize that out of that, two-thirds of that money is dedicated. We, we did, we're a funnel, but those departments, if they, if they're smart with their money, then that goes in that fund balance, but we don't have a chance for that. So when people say, what, just, you've got three hundred and ten million dollars, you've got all kinds of money you can spend, you do all kinds of things? Yeah, we have money, but those, most of that money, two-thirds of that money is all dedicated, and it has to go to whatever, that money comes from, whether it comes from DC or comes from Salem. So we have a very small plot of money, the budget committee has a very, relatively, if you can talk about millions being small, a, a small amount of money to play with, if you will play, is probably the wrong choice of words, but to use.
One of the things that we're interested in, the libraries and accounting, isn't accounting going to be in a position here in a couple of years where they'll actually be able to be something, like, there's a, there's a bond or something?
The libraries, in twenty, in twenty twenty, the library bonds will be paid off. Now, we may get into a position like we did out of White City, where things were going better, so we paid off early. We had it in our bond, our, our bond sale, that we could buy, we could buy, we could pay off early. We have that with, with the library bonds as well.
Is that money coming out of a new tax district?
No, no. That money, we're getting, we're getting, that's, that's part, that's in our, that's in our, that's in your bill that the voters passed in two thousand.
So the bonds are the county's responsibility then?
Right, but, but it's actually coming from the taxpayers. But my point being is, if we can, if we can do better, we can take the money out of, out of our reserves and pay that bond off early if we figure it's a good deal. But now that it's a, it's own district, we probably won't do that. Because if we did, we'd probably ask the district to make up, you know, something in there, because we'd be taking dollars that we're drawing interest on now, that big one and a half percent whopping, and we'd be getting nothing for it. But we're talking about a lot of millions of dollars, a one percent is still a lot of money.
Well, you won't, you won't hear what happens, but just hypothetically, you know, once those bonds are satisfied, the county really doesn't have any interest in owning these buildings.
Exactly.
I mean, this, this building that we're in right now, could you see maybe the county just turning the building over to the city of Jacksonville? And then the city of Jacksonville could, could just staff it any way they Well, then, well, rent it, rent it back to the library district.
They could, whatever, you're, but you're exactly right. I'll speak for the current board of commissioners, that would be our desire, but again, in twenty twenty, it'll be up to that board of commissioners.
The main library is owned by, by the college, it's totally county?
They lease that space to our CC. The county leases that. Well, now, that leases, is, is, well, the county's still leasing that money, because it's still the county building. It will be into twenty twenty. The only building that's not true on is Ashland, the old original Ashland Library, the stone concrete is, is, it belongs to the city of Ashland, the large annex, the improvement, that belongs to the county. Everything in the library belongs to the county, books, tables, computers, all of that belongs to the county. And that was the whole issue with working things out with the new library district.
So the county owns, still owns the books?
Yeah.
Even when they buy, when the district buys a new book?
When the, when the district buys a book, so, yeah, I mean, they'll own it. But that, all that material there belonged to the citizens of Jackson County. Now, since the library district is Jackson County, one can argue, well, what difference does it make?
But they're not under the commissioners at all, are they?
No, no, they're entirely with, they have five commissioners, I forget directors, whatever they're calling themselves, and they're, they're absolutely responsible for all the operations of the libraries.
How about the maintenance of the buildings?
We've contracted with them, we being the county, have contracted them to maintain it, but they're paying us for that.
So county workers are working
Maintaining, maintaining.
But the money's coming from the district.
That's correct, yeah. We're just, we have, we have contracts like that in other places as well.
Because the county right now is supposedly responsible for up to five feet around this building.
That could be it, I
Yeah, that's, I was on the meeting, we did that, and the city then takes over from there, but sits on city land.
Yeah, and this is, this is a unique deal here, but this is the only place where that's, except Ashland, where actually the county bond sits on city land.
So it'd be, be nice to get the county out of the library business, I think.
We're all, I'm all for that. As soon as, that was, we're saying what it was with historical, as soon as we're on
You know, one of the things
Unless we're getting money for it.
This is a non-sequitur, but one of the things that I'd like to hear you talk about a little bit if you can, is where are we going with our, with our airport, with our air, air service? What's, what's going on there? That's kind of a big deal.
You mean, okay, so are you talking about with, with commercial airlines coming in and out?
Well, we, yeah, we had, a few years back, we decided we're gonna make it an international
Technically, it still is.
Yeah, yeah, and we had, and we had a port of entry and
We had, we had that, yes, we had, we had a port of entry, we had the free trade zone.
Quite a bit advertising
Through the hard work of Mike Burle Senior, to, to get that done, the whole idea was going to be this, this trade zone. And the forensic lab had a lot to do with that, the forensic lab in Ashland had a lot to do with it. They could bring specimens in, they could bring them from all over the world, Atlanta here, Bedford, wouldn't have to pay any, do anything, you could take them with the forensic lab, and so was, this was before my time, but I remember being in some meetings with some other organizations on that, and it just never panned out, I mean
I know you've got Burn Case, it's in charge, in charge of all that. If you're gonna kind of give us the readers' digest, really important, the airport's really important, because a lot of the people that come and work here have businesses and even homes in other places, and the airport's important to them to get, you know, to get here and go back, and so, so, does our, I mean, are we stable, are we growing?
We are, I tell you what, when Burn Case retires, which will be in the next few years, We are, I tell you what, uh, when Bern Case retires, which will be in the next few years, it will be a huge hole. He, I remember I told you, made the comment of that we don't do anything for free, Bern doesn't do anything for free. His whole focus is on building a bigger, not necessarily bigger, but, but bigger, but a better airport, better airport service. And he works twenty-four hours a day at that, that's what he does. So he, and he comes up with innovative ideas on how to get that done, and he works tough, works tough lease agreements with the, with the rental car agencies, uh, very competitive on that. Uh, works with our tenants out there at the, at the airport, uh, works with the airlines, I mean, we'd like to have a little bit more service. I mean, we still fly direct to six cities, which is pretty incredible, uh, for an airport our size, but, uh.
Is he county employee?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, he's a county employee, he's a director. Uh, but, it's very stable, the FAA loves us, if I can say, honestly, they do, we're, we're, we're pretty easy, if you all have easier, I don't know. We get grants readily, both from, from the federal government, from the FAA.
We're not a large community, and a lot of communities our size are having trouble with staffing their towers to Salem, yeah, to, to, or to FAA requirements, so, but, but we're not, we're, we're in good shape.
We are in excellent shape, absolutely excellent shape. I mean, that is a jewel, I, I, I think, as I look at the Rogue Valley, uh, I give caduce to the city of Metford on the sports park on the, on the south end of town. That's an absolute jewel when you drive into, into Metford. Unfortunately, the rest of the town doesn't match up, but that area is gorgeous, it's a moneymaker, brings in tremendous money, just gets bigger and better and better and better. I count that, and our airport is, is, from a capital standpoint, building, uh, that sort of thing is our two, the two best assets here in Rogue Valley.
And the county owns the airport outright?
Yes.
Metford, Metford used to own?
It's in the Metford, no, never was, always been, used to be out there in the boonies.
Yeah.
When they moved from, from McAndrews.
So Metford didn't have anything to do with establishing that there?
No, no, uh-uh, no, that's, that's, county bought that land a long time ago and moved out there, no, that's, we're in the, we're in the Metford city limits. We have to abide by, by Metford, uh, rules and regulations, we sit in their city, city limits, but it's on all county.
Well, I have to go pick up my granddaughter.
Well, thanks for coming, Kevin, you, anything, anything you wanna chew on?
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it, thanks for coming.
And I must have met you twenty-five years ago when I went out and cuddled you, did I flip him for mine?
Yeah, see, I'm glad we were having, able to help.
I'd like to resume our conversation about economics, uh, being the liaison to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which, um, in context, I've kind of picked up on the phraseology, um, economic development as being tourism, attracting more tourist dollars. So philosophically, um, I've, I've shared kind of the tagline, everything above the ground originally came from below the ground. And this is where wealth was created, for America in general to be strong. Specifically, Jackson County became very strong through timber industry, mining, agriculture, and the natural resources industry is, is suffering badly. And you can look at the indicators, the symptoms would include, um, uh, Medford citizens, I think it was like three weeks ago, there was a press release in the Mail Tribune that there's a record number of people who can't even pay their utility bills, which of course, as you would recognize, be the, the first thing that people need to pay to exist. Now, to me, that, that set up a huge red flag, that Jackson County residents, not Jackson County government, are in a huge downward spiral, okay? And I think it's important at this point in time of Jackson County's history to distinguish between public sector and private sector, to address the very important issues that need to be addressed in order to help the private sector rebound, if that's possible, so that the public sector can be funded by the private sector. You mentioned something, well, taxpayers pay for that. Guess what? The taxpayers pay for everything. The government doesn't pay for anything without, right? Okay? What can you, as the chair of the board of commissioners, do to resuscitate and revitalize the private sector economy in this county?
Well, that's like asking, if I may, Kevin, if I may draw the example, asking what the president of the United States could do to, to turn the country around from an economic morass over the last eight years. Uh, it, it, it's, it's not an unfair question, but it's, it's a question that, that you, there's, there's nothing that I or any county commissioner do can flip the switch and, uh, all of a sudden do this. So, so let me give you, and you've heard me say this before, this is gonna be old, so it's gonna be redundant to you. You can, you can do several things, you can, you can work from the, from the, uh, from the regulatory side to try to streamline all of that as much as you possibly can, okay? To make it as easy, recognizing that we, we are in the Senate Bill one hundred, we are in the most restrictive land use laws in the United States, right here. So working within that envelope. You can try to, you can try to streamline as best you can. I hear complaints from time to time about people unhappy with our, either our planning department or our building department or et cetera, wait too long, valley health, so on and so forth. I gotta tell you, those people work their rear ends off, they are constrained, they have a charge, they have a check sheet they have to turn in. So, anyway, and I'm not saying that there is a mistakes made, it absolutely happens, but, so that's one, regulatory, okay? So you wanna make sure that you're, as, we have a policy in Jackson County to be no more restrictive than state laws, when people say, well, big deal. Well, we could be, there are a lot of people that are, okay, there are cities that are, so that's one, okay? Another thing we can do, okay, is, is to try to keep the fees somewhat reasonable. Uh, SDCs, community development fees, et cetera, they're all there, they're all there to raise money. And you weren't at our planning commission, uh, or not planning commission, at our, our staff meeting this morning, we had a long discussion about taxing marijuana. Okay, I lost a brother or sister to drugs, so I'm not, I'm, I'm very opposed to drugs. But the discussion was on, and this all has to do with fees, this is in context, if you bear with me. But a commissioner or two brought up the deal about, well, boy, we raised the taxes on, on, on marijuana, that's gonna help us regulate marijuana, it's gonna keep people from using marijuana, and I said, no, look at cigarettes. I mean, cigarettes cost like five something a pack, and four dollars, that's tax. Did it stop people from smoking unnecessarily? You know, and I mean, most people see smoking and the folks that shouldn't be, it can't even afford it, nobody should be smoking, but can at least afford it. This is for the next smoker. So, so where I'm going with this is, is that, I said, let's be honest. I said, there, there's four reasons to tax marijuana, and so, and some in my opinion are more viable than the others. If there was a direct cost, if, 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 and I'm talking about medical or even recreational marijuana, if there's an additional cost to the county, I'm talking just about county, because this would just be countywide, because cities are doing their own thing, is that, then we should be able to charge enough money to cover those additional costs. Okay, I'll buy that. Number two is because I'm morally opposed to marijuana, period, which I am. But I mean, be honest about it and say, I'm, I'm opposed, so I'm gonna tax the hell out of it, okay? Number three.
So are you, are you for taxation of marijuana?
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get there. Okay, number three is, is number three, I know number four, I'm gonna finish with number four.
Go ahead and jump to four.
Oh.
Come back to three later.
Yeah, number four is, in my belief, is the honest reason to me, is because we want more money. That's, I mean, that's really, we want more money, we're, we're typical government, that no matter how much we got.
Never enough.
It's never enough, because we can always find ways to spend it, you know, as opposed to our own personal budget at home, we can always find ways. And some very meaningful, I mean, I, so, but, but you can always find a way, okay?
This whole thing about never enough, um, I'm sure you recognize that every dollar inside county government is a dollar outside where it could be used in the private sector.
Not necessarily, I don't think I necessarily agree with you.
Well, where else does that money come from other than the private sector?
There are some absolute, absolutely services, I, well, okay, let's, well, let me, let me just finish with this, you can come back and ask me that question. So, so I was fairly passionate about this, I said, we're gonna put a tax on this, let's be honest about it. We're taxing it because we want money. So we go ten percent, twenty-five percent, I don't care as much as you can get, but let's, let's be on, don't, let's not put smoke in mirrors, let's not say, well, we're doing it because of this, and we're doing it because of that. And that, that's, that's the only reason I'll vote for it, because I don't, I don't believe it, it has any impact on usage, because, uh, if it's legal, okay, they're just gonna, whatever it costs them, it's like any business, their costs go up, their prices go up. What I did for years in, in, in the construction materials business, that makes sense to me. Uh, I don't think it's gonna keep anybody from, so, in the end, in the end, uh, as we decided that, yes, we would tax marijuana. The other deciding factor for my yes vote was that the cities, looks like all the cities, including Ashland, is finally going to say, yes, we're gonna tax whether medical marijuana or if recreational, if Measure ninety-one passes, uh, recreational marijuana. So if we say, no, we're not going to in the county, but every other city does, guess where the growers are going? They're coming out into our, they're coming out, our rulers, they're already there, quite honestly, but that's one reason coming back is, can we all pay for the services? So, anyway, the end is that we have to hold up, because the way our charter is, is that we have to have, have all two public meetings on this, but, uh, that's the, that's where we're going on that. Now, getting back to every dollar out, is that all in? Okay, government has a legitimate function? Absolutely has a legitimate function.
Public safety, being one.
Okay, yeah, public safety, that really was, in my opinion, the founders, that was, that was, that was the first thing, is protect our shores. That, that was, that was number one, and provide for the public welfare as far as roads, transportation, et cetera, et cetera. And then all of a sudden, well, let's tax whiskey because it was a great trade, and they're making lots of money. I mean, they had to put an army in the field to quell the whiskey rebellion, but the point being is, is that, is that there are certain services, public health, mental health, the things that we're doing, is just absolutely incredible. Now, in some cases, could the private sector do it better? You know, I mean, that's, you have to always, you have to weigh, you have to weigh that, could, could the private sector do it better than the public sector? And, and I've been very careful about that, when we get grants or something, could we do it better? Should we pass that off to the private sector? We gotta weigh that, just because it says Jackson County Public Health, that doesn't mean Jackson County has to do the work. We may end up just being a conduit to a private site. So there are, there are, there are those, there are those functions, I believe, in government, public safety, administration, uh, collecting, collecting taxes, paying for things, that is, is absolutely necessary. What you wanna look for is waste, and that's where, again, I'm pretty proud of Jackson County in the fact that we have cut our expenses considerably through people. And we've made huge changes in people, and granted, we went through the Great Recession, and we haven't needed as many people, but I've seen it in private business, so we don't need them, but we better keep them. You know, and then, and government's really easy to do, and take a look at school districts, they're all over that, anyway, so.
So efficiencies have improved, efficiencies have improved enough to where you need fewer people to do the same?
And that kind of comes back to the question there, a little bit about how we, how, you know, because, because we are actually pretty doggone efficient, are we perfect, no?
You mentioned the whiskey rebellion, uh, have you taken steps to avoid a marijuana rebellion? I mean, because isn't that the same formula?
Well, well, I mean, that was a discussion today, that's what's gonna happen, I mean, and we're, that's not unique to us. I think all the jurisdictions are worried about that, because you're just gonna, Colorado, I mean, they've made, I don't know how many billion dollars since they got legalized, but they also recognize they've driven more into the black market too, because it's a lot cheaper, or to the medical marijuana side. Because in Cali, in Colorado, they don't charge anything, there's no tax in Colorado on medical marijuana. Here in Oregon, all the, all the jurisdictions are saying, yeah, we're, we're taxing medicine, we're, we're gonna tax all of that, because that's really what it is. So are we gonna take those people and say, screw you, I'm going down here to Fred on the corner, and I'm gonna buy my marijuana there, because it's gonna be cheaper. I don't use the stuff, I hate the stuff, but, I mean, how much money do I got, only makes sense.
You said that's what it is, marijuana is medicine for many people, um, and I brought up industrial hemp.
Yeah, and.
For some reason, Commissioner, you go right to marijuana, but it should be treated as a separate issue.
Okay, okay, we had that discussion today, you, the fact I thought about you.
Good.
Only talking about, I was getting, uh, because I read the information that you've given me on hemp, and so I wanted to ask counsel today, okay, now, I've read this, et cetera, and, uh, and absolutely, it is in the same genus pool, but it held, it contains no THC.
Thank you.
So, without that, then there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to, I don't understand, though, quite honestly, and then, one of my emails back to you, we do this, correct? Oh, one of my emails back to you, remember we talked, and I said, but it seems like, keep shooting something, they keep shooting themselves in the foot, because it's this, it's this kind of going, you get this picture, and then not just the picture, but of the old sixties where it's party downtime, and, and, and so if you're trying, if I, if I, if I'm in the hemp industry, and I'm trying, I'm trying to, to sterilize, that's wrong, or trying to clean up Miami, so, because I really think there's positive uses for it, that, that doesn't need to be working, so people, you know, I'm just telling you.
You're talking about a marketing campaign to overcome a perception.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
So people are gonna think what they're gonna think, but if they see leadership take the role and, and decide to do it this way, because they are beyond the public perception, they know what the truth is about it, why couldn't you just say, you know, I understand there's a perception out there, and I'm probably a minority perception at this point in time, Jackson County government's gonna go this way, because we believe it's right for Jackson County. Again, everything below the ground is eventually used as raw materials for above the ground or consumption. And, and that's really where the wealth of counties come from, in order to approve, in order to, um, afford public safety. You look at Joe's County, they've been cut off at the knees with the, the timber industry, and they're dying. They have people that are calling nine one one, and they're being turned away, and the next morning, there's a headline in the newspaper saying, this horrible thing happened.
I disagree.
Okay, well, the private sector is, is saying, please let us work the land, so.
Okay, but the county, see, that's it, when I talked about, about our restrictive land use laws, I mean, that's the reason we tried to work at the state level through the Association of Orient Counties, because that gives us the most voice, as opposed to just Doug Brightenfeldt going out there, he's an effective lobbyist, but going out there and doing it, you have to do it in numbers, and of course, obviously, you have to increase those numbers when you go back to DC. How effective that is, I'm not positive, you know, but never, but nevertheless, you keep, I say, we just keep chipping away, hopefully something will change. I don't have a whole bunch of positive thoughts, and, and I'm thinking about the timber industry and such. So, but you still have to keep doing it, you don't just throw up your hands and walk away, because that's quite honestly what the environmentalists, and when I say environmentalist, I'm an environmentalist in a way, but I'm not, I'm not extremist, I mean, I've, I've lived in this valley for sixty years now, sixty years exactly this year, and I like this valley, but I gotta tell you, this valley's a much cleaner valley than when I first moved here. In the summer times, it would be so bad here, you couldn't see the hills, in July and August, early September, because of the inversion factor, I mean, we got that climatic situation, which they said is even worse than Long Beach, that was a report of several years ago. But because there were so little, few restrictions on, on, uh, emissions, and mainly coming from wood stoves, uh, the old style wood stoves, and from the mills. Now, the mills spent several millions of dollars cleaning themselves up, we don't have the wood stoves, or very few of those, and they did something on the, on the automobile in certain areas. But this is a different area, if you've lived here any time at all, this is a different valley. From an era, shit, situation than it was sixty, fifty years ago. I'm just saying, so there's, there's, so when I say I'm an environmentalist, that's what I mean, there are certain things that, that really need to be done, need to make sure that, but, but, setting a law, huge swaths of, of, of land, so some hiker, some young man or woman at eighteen or twenty-three or thirty-five, that's in a ten times better shape than I am, can take, some land needs to be set aside for wilderness, but that doesn't mean hundreds of square mile, thousands of square miles, I don't believe in that, I think that's wrong.
Right, and back to industrial hemp, can you put a bow on the package and, and really come out with your personal opinion, regardless of this public perception of the law?
Well, I'd have to talk to somebody who's in the hemp business.
You haven't yet, I mean, I've encouraged you to go to dispensaries and talk about the CBD, the cannabinoid content versus the THC.
I think I've read almost everyone here, I don't know, I don't know if I've ever given. I think I've read almost everyone here, I don't know, I don't know if I've ever given you a specific place to go.
Oh, well.
I'm seriously.
Okay, I'll send it again, but that, that was my encouragement, is to talk, you know, technical specifications with the people who know it best.
So, so if we're talking about a resource-based economy, is there any, any, uh, good news as far as forest use? When heading down the road, gonna, gonna have any access to our timber better than we have now, or is it gonna be pretty much choked off over the future?
You know, I, honest opinion, Don Scuntry's opinion, I don't think we're going anywhere. There have, with, with that said, there seems to be more movement, at least a lot more chatter on both sides of the issue than there has been in a long time. There used to be a lot of yelling on both sides, but as far as conversation, or at least discussion, uh, there was very little. This is my position, this is my position, and never the two shall meet. The, the two major legislations, one on the Senate, uh, Senator Wyden's side, and then the one out of the House, uh, those are two entirely different, uh, solutions. I don't think that those could, I mean, there's that case where they're not yelling at each other, they're saying, no, it isn't gonna happen. So you might as well try to do something else. Somehow, they have to come into some sort of compromise. I don't think the, the, the plan on, on the, on the Wallen, Schrader, Defazio, as far as dividing up the property, I mean, what I'm gonna call property, fifty percent being timber-producing property and fifty percent society. I don't think that's ever gonna happen, I don't see the federal government ever say, ever saying that, period. I'm saying they shouldn't, but I'm just saying I don't ever see that. Uh, on the other hand, I don't think the House is ever gonna give up the point of, of, of saying, well, then, okay, if that's not, if that's not the solution, then what is? Because we have rural America, in Oregon especially, that are suffering, so if, instead of just saying, no, give us an alternative. Well, the senators said, well, here's the alternative, we'll do some, we'll, we'll do some, um, clear cut, not clear cutting, um.
Select, selective force.
Select, select cutting, uh, and such, and we'll do this, and we'll have, we'll have a little timber sale here, well, that's kinda what they're doing now. And, uh, that, that can't, you talk to the, you talk to the timber products, Boise Cascades, Murphy Lumber, Swanson Lumber, Road Forest Products, that's not a way to run a business, I mean, you can't do that. So, um, now, little victory up there in, in Cave Junction, uh, with, uh, with, uh, Rough and Ready there, but that's all subsidized. They would never have been able to do that if the state hadn't given them X amount of dollars. 'Cause they're, I mean, they, they completely refitted their mill to work on small diameter logs. Well, they can do that now because they got money from, from the state. But when it has to stand on its own two feet, I don't see it happening. I think it's, all it did is just, it put sixty people back to work out of the hundred that were laid off for a couple, three years. But I think it's just kicking a can down their throat, so. The honest answer, I hate to be a pessimist, but I, but, so what, what are?
No, good, good, good answer. So my next question, which I think you already know, I think you have response to this, is since, and I think I agree with you. So since we agree and recognize that a resource-based economy is, is a lot more in the past than it is in the future, what are we gonna do to employ these kids that we spend eleven thousand dollars a year educating when they get out of high school and realize that they live in a place that has the worst ratio of wages to house prices in the United States?
It's very, uh, that's a timely question. And working really hard with, uh, with, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Road Workforce Partnership and with the Job Council, which are one of the same kinda, uh, and with, with the economic folks like So Ready saying that, so it's a chicken and the egg sort of situation, quite honestly? You can train the workforce for high-tech jobs, if you will, or high mechanical jobs, or dry trade jobs. But if there's no workforce, we're not stable. And the cut, people like RCC and such can't afford to build their, their infrastructure up to train those kids to go off somewhere, they just can't afford, and they haven't got enough volume. So that's one part of the chicken or the egg, the other part of the chicken and the egg is, the business over here says, you know, we kinda like Southern Oregon, this is kind of a nice place. Uh, yeah, your land use laws are a little goofy, uh, but, you know, we kinda like it here. So, uh, we're gonna hire five hundred people, oh, I was just saying, we're gonna hire two hundred people. And these are the skills we gotta have. But we don't have any of those right now. So that owner says either one or two things, says those, adios, I can't, you know, I can't. Or they may say, well, you know, I tell you what, I can bring up, if we're talking people relocating out of California, for example. I can bring up, it's gonna cost me a lot of money, but I really like this, so I can bring up, uh, my key people, key group of people. And then we can kinda hire, we can train, I mean, they really wanna work with us and this is happening. But then their key people say, I'm not going to Southern Oregon. They come up here, oh, this is beautiful, like, most of them are young, I can ride my, my trail bike on here, I can hang light off Wood Rat, I can be on the road there coast, I can go up north and go winter, I can, what a wonderful place this is. But you know, if it doesn't work out here, where do I go to work? See, I don't go, like, if you go to, to, to Washington County, for example, and you work for Intel, it doesn't work for you there. And you just go right across the street to Google. If it doesn't work there, then you go over here to Amazon. And those are all businesses in Portland now, I mean, so they're not headquartered there except for Nike, okay? So, but, so that's a big deal. So you think, you know, you, you think about your kids, think about, that's the reason, my, one boy lives in New York and one of them's in LA. When they came out of high school, when they came out of college, there wasn't the kind of work here that they needed. So, so what do you do? Do you, do you, do you, do you build the workforce, which, which, like I said, which is working on and, and working with Rogue Community College and gave them some money to try to, to gear up specifically for industrial workers? It's a new euphemism now for, it used to be mill rights, but now they're called industrial workers. Uh, well, those are all mill right, but nevertheless. So you do that, and you try to, or do you say, come on up and we'll give you so many incentives that'll be worth your while to do kind of an OJT sort of deal and do that? So it's, it's, it's difficult, and that gets right, I mean, it's your question as well, Kevin, about do, what, what, what can government do? And that's the, the fence that I personally am locking, and we as a board of commissioners, uh, are, what, what, what can we do as a government to encourage? We tried the job grant program here a couple, three years ago, I got billified for that a bit. Uh, I thought it was a decent idea, it was public money, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars over two years doing that. It helped a few businesses, but certainly didn't turn us around by any stretch. And then when we, the, uh, the Budget Committee, they didn't like the way that money's being spent, so that was one voice, but nevertheless. The answer to your question, though, and I actually do believe this, and I'm gonna be a lot more optimistic on this side than the question than, than on the one you asked me about, uh, before, Forest Timber, is that we have a surprising underground of small manufacturers in the valley, tech businesses as well, e-commerce as well. Motorcycle USA is a flagship of that group, where Harry David, but Harry David's been here forever. But Motorcycle USA started in his grandfather's attic, and he got point. We have some of those entrepreneurs here, we have people that, that, now, the biggest issue they face is capital. So that's where the Angel Network helps, you know, uh, trying to provide equity capital and such. But I, I, I'm very encouraged with the small electronics, small machine shops, I'm talking anywhere from five to twenty-five employees. And they're all off the radar screen, hardly anybody, unless you're involved, as a vendor or something and that, you don't even know they exist. And they exist all the way from Cave Junctions, uh, through Merlin, and out of Josephine County, down through White City, through Met, to Ashland. Uh, and so I think that's where we have to go, quite honestly, I think we have to put the money in education. How you just talked about how many, through high school, that's a whole deal that county has nothing to do with. I don't think we're training our kids the way we should be, but they've tried all kinds of things. I don't know the answer to that, my wife's a vast educator, as you all know, I don't know the answer there, I, I really don't. Public school, private school, that's really scary. I mean, it's 'cause most kids don't take math classes, they don't see the relevance of it. I'm not gonna be a mathematician, I'm not gonna be a scientist, that's all, I'm gonna go out and do my hand. They don't realize that they may use Algebra One on a daily basis, but they don't, they don't know that. They haven't, for some reason, our education hasn't, that hasn't trans, translated itself as, I'm a teacher and I'm passionate about history, that's what I was gonna be, was a history teacher when I went to college. That was my original idea, 'cause I'm passionate about history. So, and it makes me teach easier because I've tried to build that, even when history is pretty boring, if you don't like it. My point being is, if we could get, and I'm gonna pick on math teachers, we could get, so, they may be passionate about math, about the theory of math and how it works and the mechanics of mathematics. But as far as translating to that, boy, if you do this, you're gonna use this, no matter what, what vocation you go into. So the kids kinda get, hey, this is kinda cool, I could get, so anyway, that's my own personal soapbox. I didn't answer your question, but that's what I feel.
Back to economic development, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into economic development in Jackson County. And I use the bunny ears because I, I really am picking up on this whole tourism focus. And I've heard, I've heard what I've recognized as well, is a missing link between, um, the employer and the employees. There seems to be a missing link where Jackson County has to tell the prospective employers that want to come into Jackson County, it's a beautiful place. Well, aren't there people that already know how to do most of the jobs that they're looking for? There will be a little bit of OJT, but is there a clearinghouse of resumes of people who love this area and have to move here? How do they get recognized as potential employees? Can Jackson County Government provide that clearinghouse service to complete that bridge between the employers and employees?
Well, I don't think we are the vehicle for that. However, I believe that we are the vehicle from a facilitation standpoint, and that's something I've tried to work on. Uh, you hear a little bit of that discussion when you were up there at, at the retreat up there. We are still, and, and we have too many silos still.
Right.
Uh, within the county, like I said the other day, we have nine incorporate cities in a, in a, in a, with a population of two hundred eight thousand. That's funny, 'cause we all have our own little, Phoenix is Phoenix, White City's White City, and Ashland's Ashland, Beautiful Falls, Beautiful Falls.
Isn't that why Jackson County Government can provide that?
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to do, but it's very, very hard, because you gotta break that down. It's very, that means, because I'm Central Point, and I'm just picking on that, I'm Central Point, this is, this is me, this is what I wanna be, this is what I'm looking at, okay? I'm Ashland, we know Ashland is Ashland.
Most people don't work in the same zip code where they live, so there has to be a bridge built between these prospective.
My one regret about leaving after only four years, 'cause that's what I was working on. I mean, we've made a few inroads, at least we talk to one another now, we didn't usually even talk to each other. Uh, in fact, if any conversation or any interaction was mostly derogatory, so I, I, I probably have to act, at least we talked to one another. So, I've got a quote on my wall, I'm a quote guy, 'cause I'm, I'm not smart enough to have any original thoughts, but I love to copy others, but I give them full credit, uh, and it says, uh, it says, this is by, this is by Henry Ford. If you know anything about his history, it's kinda interesting that he would do this, 'cause he wasn't the most perfect man in the world by any stretch. But he says, "Coming together is the beginning." Working together, let me see what's up, working together is progress. So crap, solving problems, the thing was, I'm sorry, I don't remember the chapter, the thing is, okay, it's good, I got somebody to come together, good for you. Number two, while they're kinda talking to one another, okay, that's good. But come, so they're actually working together for a result, outcomes, that's success. Remember, that's the last part, that's success. I think we're in stage two now?
Not if prospective employees are not recognized.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about entities now, I'm talking about whether they be public entities, like cities, jurisdictions, or like So Ready or Assistant. But I think, well, at least we're talking, I think we're talking together. We haven't, because, we haven't got over here because that's Rogue River, that's Goldale, or that's Metford, you know? And so, instead of saying, this is, this is Rogue Valley, and I understand, I mean, I understand the individual, I mean, there are different needs for different cities, and I understand that, and I, and I respect that. But ultimately, I believe in the old high tide floats all the boats, so that's what I've tried to work on. Anything else?
I, I, I don't have any more questions, but it's got some comments, comments.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think you've done a really good job, Don, I, I'm, me and a lot of people like me are, uh, not happy that you decided not to run here. And you think you did a great job, we thought that you and John and Doug and me were a good team. We liked the idea of running the candlelight business, we, we thought that was a really kind of a common sense approach, and you guys pulled it off pretty darn good. And we kinda hoped that that would continue.
Well, I appreciate that, but I was up front. I knew, I knew right up front that I was the only one to be able, only able to, I had made a promise to my wife when I was asked to run. And we were, that was, I'd already retired twice, and, and we had never spent any really good, well, we've had, we've had great times together, but not any time when I haven't had to be somewhere or something, and so, anyway, and I have regrets about that.
Well, I, I appreciate all the, all these town halls, I, I really don't know another, not in my remembrance, I can't remember another county or nation in all these town halls. You're the only one I can remember that's ever.
So I've gotta tell ya, I have told all the candidates that have come into my office that I would hope that, that they, someone would, would do this, somebody would go to city council. It's very gratifying to me, I'll be honest, from the Eagle standpoint. When I go to a city council meeting, I was at Eagle Point last night, Tuesday night. Uh, and, uh, and almost everyone, they're very gracious when I go to, they recognize and say, nice to have you, Commissioner. And now I've done so many times, I don't know how many times, uh, I've done that, and several scores, but, but, uh, the comment, when I first started, I went to, we've never seen a county commissioner before, seriously, you know, that we've never seen anybody. And, and if, if you've been to any that I've been to, I don't go to make a presentation unless it was over the libraries or something like that, but I just go to listen. So then when I come back, I report on that. I just, I, and I, and I've shared that, like I say, with the candidates that who have come in and talked to me. Not all of them have, but I would hope that somebody would, because I think the groundwork's been laid, and, uh, hopefully, somebody will take that up.
Do you think Commissioner Pratton will pick up the ball and run with it?
He might, he might.
Doug likes being out in the front, I don't do this 'cause I like being out in front. And that's, I mean, that's an honest statement, uh, I do this 'cause I think it's something should be done. I'm not good at small talk, I'm not good at, I recognize all my, my shortcomings. But, but Doug does like, he does like to be out in front, and I'm not saying that that is negative or positive, either way, he just does. He's gonna, he's enjoying being county commissioner, I enjoy being county commissioner, but he really enjoys it. So it's something I see him doing for a long time, as long as he gets reelected. And with the, with whomever gets elected in one and three, I don't, yeah, well. I really think eight years is right, I think two terms is just the right amount of time. Because I tell you what, even in my four years, it's easy to get sucked in. You have to really watch yourself, because pretty soon, well, gee, that's kinda the way we do it. You know, and you gotta be very careful, whether it's administrator or department head or something, you know, or, you know, the easiest way to hide it from all, that's law. Says so in statute. And so I've counseled, uh, again, the few people that have come in to talk to me, always ask why. Not that, I'm not saying there hasn't been any deceptions being done, it's just you need to know yourself and not just go, and it's real easy to fall into that trap. Oh, okay, sign my name. And I think, that's one reason I ran against Jack, he'd been in, in office for sixteen years. And, and we agreed on a lot of things, but we disagreed on a few other things, and I just thought sixteen years for an elected official is, is too long. I just think you do become part of the system. And, uh, I don't, so, but eight years is about right, you get the first four years, you really get your things under, you know, your feet underneath you, and then you can maybe be a little more effective, you know, after that. I get asked why I still go to city council meetings and even though. I get asked why I'm still going to city council meetings, and even though I knew I wasn't running for reelection, it's because it's part of the job, as far as I'm concerned.
Would you offer any mentorship to the, one or two of the new candidates?
Absolutely, nobody's asking.
First time.
So, actually, I tell you what, and then we close up here, but, I mean, this is where we live, this is, like I said, I've lived here for sixty-one years, my wife's lived here for, she came here in sixty-three, so she's, fifty years that she's lived here. That's where we live, this is where we raised our kids, even though our kids aren't here, so I would hope to come back and be of some sort of, some sort of service somehow, mentor or whatever, we're gonna take a little trip after the first of the year, in the motorhome for a few months, but other than that, I'll come back and be of assistance.
I can suggest a couple things for you to work on after you've caught your breath a little bit, you know, and truly, it's the same thing you've already been working on with, which is common sense, financial practices, and flexibility, any business has to be flexible to survive, and one of the things that you struggle with is that you were, if I remember right, eighty percent of your budget, eighty percent of the entire county budget was wages and salaries, if I remember right.
You know, I don't have that number, but it wouldn't surprise me, I mean, that's, that's what government is, mainly is bodies, it's not very much, very little equipment.
And ninety, ninety percent of your employees are under representation, if I remember right.
We have six hundred, we have six hundred and some employees, just in the low, six-six or six-ten or something like that, from a high of a thousand.
So, you don't have, in the county, you don't have the flexibility that a private business may manage, for instance, when you're on the private side, if you have a lot of business, you hire more employees, if you had slow business, you could let employees go so that you could balance your payroll according to the demands of your business, you can't do that when you're in the county, when you're...
It's tough, you can do it, but it's very tough.
And it's not, it's not a responsive process, it's something that you have to do it within budget cycles, and you have to do it within the representation, it's very cumbersome. So, one of the, one of the things would be, you know, working on flexible scalability by, you know, maybe more privately, and I know you've had a fair amount of private contracting already, but that would be, you know, that would just be a wonderful, wonderful thing to build on the work that you've already done, is, clearly, in the county, the ability to be more scalable and more flexible.
We have done quite a bit of, you know, we have done quite a bit of private contracting now, because in some cases, the private side does a lot better than the government's side, you know?
Amazing, what a concept.
Yeah, not always, sometimes. We force, I tell you, when I first came on board, that our roads department, those people were not up in arms, but they were very anxious, because here's this guy, this executive from Knife River, gonna come in, and the first thing he's gonna do is gonna privatize a whole lot of a job, so I got in front of him, I spoke to him, just in the first three months after taking the office, and I told him, "That's not my intent, and I'm only one of three, but I gotta tell you that I can speak for my other new county commissioner, who is out of the private side, and we expect our employees to be as efficient or more efficient than the private side, if you're not, if not, it's our responsibility, the taxpayers in Jackson County, to get it done the best way, the best way, the best value, lowest cost, greatest, greatest return, so, you know, sometimes, but you gotta work the value, you gotta work the outcome, it's the important thing." And I was real honest with him, so I said, "You know, guys in gowns, you gotta perform, it's just as simple as that, I'm not here after your job, I'm just making sure that your job's..." And then I spoke to him two or three times, I just spoke to him again here about four months ago, and I was really pleased, had a lot of folks come up, and we've cut that section down quite a bit, not because we outsourced a bunch of this, because we just have the money to do it, that's one, the roads department is funded completely out of the road fund, which is entirely, we have, that doesn't come from our taxes, it comes from our taxes, but not our county taxes, and that's dedicated dollars, it comes from the federal government and the state, part of the old timber payment thing, but, and I had several people come up from these, and we really appreciated that, that we felt much better, we knew we just better keep our head down, our butt up, so, anyway, thanks for coming, I appreciate you guys coming.